Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call our City Council Committee the whole meeting for Wednesday, November 6, 2019, to order. At this time for our moment of silence, I want to take a moment to think about, again, on one side, all those that ran for election. You know, everybody talks about things, but certain people get out and actually put their neck out and do something. And I want to thank everybody for doing that, plus all the voters that voted. That's also part of this process. It's extremely important as well. We need to understand that that's how -- I was at a Veterans Day ceremony the other day, and I had the opportunity to talk to individuals there, and many gave their lives for us to have the right to vote. So I want to thank all of my colleagues, those that were successful and those that came close. We want to thank all of them for their efforts. And with that all in mind, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Dickman, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Brian, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
President.
Mattson.
Here.
Ann Dunn.
Here.
Ten present, your honor.
Thank you very much, Brian. As we begin this meeting, again, I want to wish you good evening, and we're glad that you're here. And this meeting of our city council this evening, I would like to again welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or on your mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region, as our Committee the Whole meetings are recorded and available on the City of Davenport website for viewing. We're happy that you are participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones or other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you stop, step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, thank you. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just a reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday in observation of Veterans Day.
Thank you, and again, Happy Veterans Day to so many. We will be having the Veterans Day Parade in downtown Davenport as well. We have four public hearings this evening. The first one is Community Development, and Alderman Rossen will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, your honor. I open a public hearing for the ordinance amending various titles, chapters, and sections of the Davenport Municipal Code related to outdated references to the old zoning ordinance. City of Davenport is a petitioner. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing and hearing no one, I move to close this public hearing. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that public hearing is closed, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Our second public hearing is Public Works, and Alderman Dunn will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, your honor. We have two public hearings this evening for Public Works. I open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the J.M. Morris Boulevard Pump Station, Pump Station 202 Improvement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the deck replacement on the North Division Street Bridge over Duck Creek. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed, and that concludes Public Works.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Our third area of public hearing this night is Finance, and Alderman Mattson will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Open a public hearing related to a lease agreement with Davenport Industrial Railroad LLC for the lease of the city's main track and all related side tracks and the real property 25 feet on each side thereof at the transload terminal. Anyone from the public like to comment on this? Please come, state your name and ward or address.
Thank you, Alderman. My name is John Howell, and this is Steve Verish. We're principals with Davenport Industrial Railroad LLC. We want to introduce ourselves to the city council this evening here, and just to, by way of introduction, say that we're experienced railroaders, have over 20 years in the railroad business. Our precepts that we operate a railroad with is safety first. Railroading is, can be a dangerous business, so safety first is our most important precept. Second is serving our customers well, including those that we would bring to the transload center, Sterilite, the plastics molding company in the industrial park. Third, we need to make budget, for sure. This is a for-profit operation, so we'll certainly keep our eye on the finances. But fourthly and importantly, all members of our team, we treat them with respect and dignity here. So we want to introduce ourselves to you and so let you associate some faces with the name, Davenport Industrial Railroad LLC. And if we are chosen to be your operator for the railroad and the warehouse, the transload center, we look forward to serving you and serving you as the best of our ability allows. Steve?
Yes. Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to comment? Hearing and seeing no, no one else? Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Back to you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Alderman Mattson. We have one presentation this evening, and this is one of the ones I really like to do. I like to do a lot of them, but this is one I like to do as well. You know, we talk about recognizing some of the big businesses in our community, but there's a lot of different businesses of all sides, local businesses, that really have an impact on people's lives. And to that end, I want to recognize one family and one organization, one business here this evening. Located at 902 West Kimberly Road, The Family Restaurant is locally owned and family operated business. Pete and Kathy Hissakis opened their doors for business in 1987. Pete had been working relentlessly in restaurants around Chicago area for over 10 years when he made the decision that he was ready to open his very own establishment. Touring the Midwest and looking into several potential location, Pete and Kathy decided that Davenport was the place that they wanted to call home. Immediately upon their arrival, Pete and Kathy felt an overwhelming sense of welcome. Pete has stated that in his 32 years since they have opened their doors, they have been continuously supported by the community. The Hissakis family has had the privilege of meeting hundreds of customers, and their restaurant has become a second home for not only their family, but for a gathering place for many other adults, seniors, and families. Known for their outstanding breakfast and a very extensive menu, The Family Restaurant is a Davenport staple and must, and a must, a try for all visitors. I got to share a personal note as I, before I finish this. This is also a place that I can bring in my kids and grandkids, 22 people, and they'll find a place for it to have dinner. So that's great as well. I want to thank you to Pete and Kathy Hissakis for their 32 years of dedicated service, your continuous devotion to assisting the city of Davenport in building our unique community in a warm, inviting atmosphere, as well as your contributions to the economic development and quality of life in Davenport, Iowa. The Family Restaurant is another wonderful example of Davenport's local businesses that the heart and foundation of our community. So Pete and Kathy, why don't you come on up, and let me make the presentation.
This is a, obviously a brick, representing the foundation of our community, and it reads, "Local Business: The Foundation of Our Community, Recognizing the Unique Businesses of Davenport, Iowa. The Family Restaurant, November 2019."
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[798.54]
The land that's there. I would note that zoning is a fairly blunt instrument and that there may be opportunities for changes that take place in the future. We have to use the current topography as we look at the zoning proposals being made to you. In the future, should there be a site plan that would result in a dramatic reduction in the actual, I use the word altitude above sea level and the sightlines? Certainly could understand why there might be a change, but again, we have to deal with what we have today. And again, I'd look forward to you taking a look at that. It's a pretty clear demonstration that for Forest Road Estates, to some extent, Jersey Farms to the north with respect to the objectioning party, and as well then particularly the 64 homes that are planned immediately south of my house where Advanced Homes has purchased things, that again, 55 feet is a much more appropriate height restriction. Thank you.
so I think it's probably been adequately summarized. I think nothing was necessarily resolved. I think there was some good sharing of information. The presentation that was referenced actually was put together a bit by Zach Peterson and Public Works. And I don't think, I'm told our projector doesn't work, so I don't think we'll be able to show it to you, but we can get that out to you. And it does show height differences of 55, 80 feet and 120 feet, which is I think one of the things that you had requested last week. So that kind of gives you, I think, where we're at. I'm not sure if I left the meeting a little early, but I think they maybe need some more time to kind of continue the discussion.
Something I, Ms. Pasternak had mentioned, when you say more time, because this is in a second consideration, what does that mean exactly? Are you looking to extend time?
My impression, leaving the meeting a little early and totally up to Alderman as well, but I mean, we're in the second reading of a three-reading process. He's got another
We have plenty, okay. Very good. So will the projector be ready for next week or are we dead in the water on that? Is there no money in the budget to fix the projector?
It's on the end of your agenda. I can't speak to why it's not down now, though.
But would it be ready next Wednesday? Okay.
And I'll email that out, too.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. I'll take comments from council. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity, and I want to thank the neighbors for attending the meeting. I want to thank staff for the presentation. You know, what the presentation told me was 120 feet was outrageous and that the 80-foot request was a great compromise. And I understand the neighbors' concerns because apparently they seem like they've been given the runaround at numerous times over the last 20 years by the city. So we should all have the opportunity to take a look at it. And when you do look at the, take a look, you got to have staff kind of explain what it is. And it just gives you kind of a perception. It's not necessarily how it's going to be, but it told me 120 feet was just out of the question. So, and the impact of 80 feet, I think, is minimal. And with setback and landscaping, I think it should be manageable. But you got to have the opportunity to take a look at it. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tompkins.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank staff and thank the neighbors and everybody for coming down and sharing your comments about this item. I do hope I'm with Alderman Ambrose. I hope that we can come to a compromise or everybody here can come to a compromise. So I appreciate your time and we'll see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kuhl.
Thank you, Alderwoman Rossin. As the Alderman that's responsible, most responsible for this area, I wanted to make a few comments. I want to thank Alderman Gripp last week for speaking on my behalf. I was down in New Zealand for the last two weeks, visiting my daughters, celebrating her birthday down there. I think you probably all understand that the blood comes before most anything, so I felt that was the important place for me to be. But I just wanted to reiterate a few things that were in my letter last week and some things from the meeting here just a half hour before. Over the last two years, my intent as a council member, the highest intent, has been to work with developers and residents to try to strike a balance between what's reasonable, what provides a reasonable profit to developers, but also what continues to provide dignity to residents, vested residents. In this case, it's interesting because we have more than just vested residents. That's the near-term issue. We have folks, Jersey Farms, Jersey Meadows, who are impacted by the 120 versus 55 feet. And that's understandable. And I think that's very clear to all of us. But I think it would remiss, it would be remiss for the council not to consider the long term. And that is, that is the development that this council approved for the platting by advanced homes, so 64 residential units in the southeastern, south portion of this section. These are people who do not yet live there, but I think it would be very short-term of this council not to consider their needs as well. If we were to move forward with 55, with 120 or 80 feet or 55 feet, that makes a difference to those folks that are going to be moving into that area. And I think we owe it to them to take that into consideration. I think it's just entirely too focused to consider only the people in Jersey Farms and Jersey Ridge. So for that reason, in our meeting previous, we talked about, we looked at very nice photographs of, or conceptual drawings of what it might look like. The folks that spoke up, even at the 80-foot level, can still visibly see these structures from their homes. And I know that it's a consideration of CPED, that they don't want to start incrementally making changes for CE of various heights throughout the CE corridor. It seems to me that this area, south and west of Elmore, at 55 feet, is a reasonable compromise. You know, were we to go to 80, you know, that middle ground? That's certainly a compromise. I think in this case, it's an inappropriate compromise. I think that it does not provide the level of dignity to those folks living in that area that this council owes to them. So again, in terms of balance between development and residential, at this point, I think that the discussion that we're having, that we had this afternoon, is a good one. At this point, I still believe that the 55-foot height limit is the appropriate way to go. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Kuhl. Just as a follow-up question for you, are you planning to have another discussion with the group between now and next Wednesday?
We did not discuss that, but I think it would be in order, yes. And I'll make that arrangement.
Work with Bruce Berger to get that done. Okay. Very good. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Alderwoman Rossin. I just want to kind of reiterate what I said last time, remembering that I was on the council when the casino moved out there and there was an agreement with the neighbors about this and 55-foot. And I just want to bring that to attention again. And then the topography, when you put 55 or 80 or 120, the topography is much higher. And it, so that isn't the true level of where we're going. So we need to, I think, support the neighbors because of the agreement, because of the topography and 55 feet, so that this is fair and we honor what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council would like to comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure all the Aldermen take the time to take a look at this presentation, so you have a knowledge of the impact. And I've been on the council, too, and we've worked very closely with all these neighborhoods, as the casino moved forward. And, but you know, there's another neighborhood that's been out there for over 70 years, and this is going to have a huge financial impact to them, you know, if we don't allow a compromise.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. So I will be putting this on discussion with the understanding between now and next Wednesday, there'll be another meeting with the Alderman, Alderman Kuhl, and then two sides. Item number two, second consideration ordinance for case REZ 19-10 being the request of Larry Witty on behalf of KJTLJ LLC to rezone .73 acres, more or less, of property located at the southeast corner of West Locust Street and Ripley Street from R4C, single-family and two-family central residential zoning district to C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Come on up, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmen and Women, my name is Jeff Weindrich. I was born in Davenport. I live in Bettendorf. I own property in Davenport and I serve on the Hilltop Business Association Board, which is adjacent to this property. We run down Harrison, Main and Brady. And I am rising to strongly encourage approval of this. It's been a long, hard battle to bring that neighborhood back over the last 20 years. And I was involved when they did the first SMID. We've renewed our SMID and we're making lots of progress. It's encouraging when a local businessman steps to the plate, goes through the assemblage, which takes many years, invests the money with no return for many years, and finally has the opportunity to step up and bring us something else new that will be supportive for our university up there, for our business district. So I'm excited that this is here. What it may be, he may have to come back and talk to us again when he gets a solid plan, but you can't build on residential and move it forward as it should be. So I encourage you all to upass it. And I want to compliment the developer for, you know, putting his money and his confidence in Davenport. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from, oh, yes, sir.
Okay, Bill Handel, 1514 West Side, Davenport. Didn't realize this was going to be on, but I've looked at interest on that site. All I can say is, and I don't know what the plans are on that, it's a real opportunity for revitalization of this area, just like a previous speaker was talking about. And I don't know what strings the city is planning on putting in it, but it, and it looks like a quality developer. But all I can say is, I think it'd be very important to, especially with this Hilltop District, that we maintain a solid building line on, especially on Harrison Street and perhaps on Locust Street. I think if we end up with buildings in the back and parking in the front, just like a typical shopping center, which I don't know if that's the case, what the developer's looking at or not, it would be really a disappointment and a step backwards as far as creating an in-city retail development. So most cities these days require that commercial facilities that are fronting up a major street like this, go to the building line and parking is in the back. So I think that would be something that I'd like staff to look at. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Moving on to council, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with the last two gentlemen. This is incredibly important project for that area, urban revitalization. That was one of the more struggling areas in that part of town. And it's just going to have incredible opportunity and impact on the great Hilltop neighborhood. So I'm very excited.
Anyone else from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is the first consideration ordinance amending various titles, chapters, and sections of the Davenport Municipal Code related to outdated references to the old zoning ordinance. And I'd like first to ask Ryan Rusnick to come up and just give us a brief summary of what this means exactly. This is like, almost like a permanent item on our agenda. Every six weeks.
The title block was quite long. We didn't want you to read.
Yes, I heard that it was half a page. So thank you for the.
Yeah. You know, we thought, Ryan Rusnick, Community Planning, we thought the fun was over when we did the zoning ordinance, but it wasn't. The code system that we sent the ordinance to said, here's a list of all the ordinance that reference the old zoning code. So we had to go through the entire city code and undo all of those references. And most times, they were specific to sections of the old code. So where we could, we referenced Title 17 more and tried to make it a little bit more general. So if things are amended in the future, they would. We took, so most of these are referenced to the outdated zoning ordinances. We did take the opportunity to amend a couple of other sections. I call them minor updates. One is to Chapter 8, and the other is to Chapter 13. And these relate to an order that we have with the Iowa DNR about sub pumps and roof drains draining into the sanitary sewer. And so we wanted to fix that while we were in the code because we are under that consent order. And the other, although not changing the subdivision ordinance, the subdivision ordinance was very antiquated. And so we amended it to reflect really how the practice of subdividing property happens in the city of Davenport. For instance, requiring 21 paper copies, we no longer do that. We do it electronically. And really also compelled people to construct subdivision improvements before the plat was recorded. And we just don't do that. So we took this opportunity to change that as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of 219 Scott Street to Corrosion Control Service Incorporated petitioner. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number five, resolution for case P19-03 being the request of Axiom Consultants for a preliminary plat for an 83-lot subdivision on 25.07 acres, more or less, of property located immediately west and north of Prairie Heights First Edition. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from, oh, sure, come on up. Name and address.
Brian Belk, Axiom Consultants, 60 East Court, Iowa City. We also share an office here in Davenport with Moxie. And really, just here to introduce myself and see if there's any questions, anything I can answer at any time. But we're excited to work on this and to continue to extend the single-family residential development there. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number, someone say something? Nope. Okay. Item number six, resolution supporting a workforce housing tax credit application to the state for the 400 West River project to be located in the 400 block of West River Drive and approving an urban revitalization tax exemption application for the same. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Come on up, Mr. Handel.
Didn't expect this one. As maybe people know, 400 West River, and I think there is a sign there right now, as the public thinks, is a 13-story luxury high-rise apartment or condo project, as it was announced a couple of years ago. If there is anything contrary to that that would require, that's changing it to workforce housing, I just need, I'd like to know where that can be found. So maybe after the meeting, somebody could queue me in. But it didn't look like workforce housing to me. Thanks so much.
I would like, before I go further with public, is, I think Bruce, can you come up and just define workforce housing, so everyone understands what that is? And I'd actually like just a quick rundown of what each of these projects are, because this is quite a bit of a development on the community development agenda. Can you do that on this one section, just?
Sure.
So I'm not calling you up five times.
So Bruce Berger, Community Planning. The workforce housing tax credits are offered by the state. They haven't, they basically provide, they're not low to moderate income housing, but the idea is to provide housing that is available for and across Iowa, both in rehab and in new construction. It allows both. And for several years now, they haven't offered that because they extended so many credits, the legislature didn't offer the program until, I think, 2021. However, with the recent disasters in several counties in Iowa, in disaster counties, they have allowed $10 million in tax credit authority, so that they are, for a short period of time, entertaining applications until those, that 10 million in tax credit authority is obligated. So what is on your agenda are five projects that, in Davenport, that all happen to be in the downtown area, that are hoping to apply for those credits. To apply, you need to have a resolution of support from the local governing body, and you need to have some matching funding. And it equals $1,000 per housing unit that you're proposing. And for most of these projects, the easiest way that we've used in past years is the URTE benefit. And since all of the projects are in the URTE zone, it's sort of an easy fit. If you're supportive of these five projects, the way we'd go about it is the resolutions end up being for support and for the tax, for the tax exemption to allow them to make the application. So that's what those are. You wanted a quick summary. I don't know that I have all five of the developers in the audience, but I can do that if you'd like.
That's fine. Just a quick question. So do you have off the top of your head for these five developments, what would be the dollar figure associated with that? Let's say development's done. What's the potential?
I mean, it's multi-man, each of the projects, I think they range from a low of probably seven or eight million up to almost a $30 million project. So I would guess it's in excess of $50 million total if all the projects would be approved by the state.
I've got the, 55 million if all of them were approved.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this item? And council, Alderwoman McGinnis. Oh, sorry, I got to, let me recognize Alderman Condon first.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'll be recusing myself from this item number six, 400 West River.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Did I ask Bruce to come up again? There seems to be some confusion in the room. Could you explain again the process for the public to have this information prior to our city council meetings, and how we provide it on our city website through the agenda? Could you explain that? Maybe people are confused.
You mean in terms of the project?
Yeah, the project we're talking about right now, for instance.
Okay, so.
So how would one go about finding that information?
Best way that people could find that would be on our website. And if somebody doesn't have access to that, you know, they can certainly give staff a call. My contact information is on there, my email. But if you go to our website, you should be able to download or open up PDF documents. And in each case, for each of these projects, I think we've got at least maybe a site plan or an elevation drawing, whatever it is that they've been able to submit, so.
Okay, thanks for that. And that's true when we do these projects always, right? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify, Marion, you mean people can go to the website, pull up the agenda.
Yes.
And click on an item.
Exactly.
And when it's highlighted in blue, you can click on it, and that brings up all the research, all the background material for that item, just to be clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So every Sunday night, I sit down, once I put my kids to bed, and I open up my agenda and I click through every blue link. And when I got to community development this past Sunday, I was very excited because this agenda has offered a glimpse into what downtown Davenport development could look like here in the next couple of years. And I am particularly excited about this development. It is a group of local developers, 55 market rate. It is on the western side of our downtown. It is a very good development, and it's something the council should definitely support. And I think it's one that is going to come to fruition. And I'm excited to see a new building coming out of the ground in downtown Davenport. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else from council? Seeing, and also noted here is, this item will also be voted on later in the agenda, so it can be moved along. This item, so we'll leave that as is. Item number seven, resolution supporting a workforce housing tax credit application to the state for the Yard project to be located in the 500 block of Leclerc Street and approving an urban revitalization tax exemption application for the same. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Yes, sir, come on up. Name and address.
Good evening, Sam Rogers with TWG Development, 333 North Pennsylvania Street, Indianapolis, Indiana. First and foremost, just want to thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Really just here to answer questions, but we are very, very excited about this project. We have worked very closely with both the city and with the YMCA in order to make this a possibility. We think it's going to be a great project, and we're just, and we are more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number eight, oh, is there? Oh, Bill, you coming up again? Come on. Come up to the podium.
If 500 Leclerc is on the side of the current YMCA, could somebody tell me if that's true or not?
Yes.
It is?
No, not on the current, the new development.
Okay.
Correct? Yeah, it's the new development. Okay. Feel free to pop back up next, the next one. Item, okay, moving on. Item number eight, resolution supporting a workforce housing tax credit application to the state for the 601 Brady Street project, located at 601 Brady Street, which is the Priester Building, and approving an urban revitalization tax exemption application for the same. Now, this is exciting, because I used to have an office at the Priester Building many, many years ago. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? And, are you coming up? Nope, he's not. But Bill, you are. Come on down.
Why not? I've looked at the interest at the Priester Building since I was a kid. That was one of the buildings that made me decide to become an architect. And as you know, it's one of the few, I guess, and most prominent 1950s, 1960s office building in this city. And it, if it's going to be turned into an apartment building, I think that's terrific. Council, Alderman McGinnis, I'm sure you're on it as far as historic tax credits to make sure that it's done right. So it'll be a credit to the city. I'm just excited. So thanks for everything.
And thank you again, Mr. Handel. Anyone from council would like to comment on this item? Alderman Condon.
Bill, I just wanted to tell you that I share your excitement. Growing up, 1950s, 1960s architecture was kind of weird to me, but it's really becoming popular with people my age. Now, it's fun to see things come back and be sought after.
Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderwoman Rossin. Yeah, just, this building was, just for information, the owners did have it listed in the National Register a couple of years ago, and it is now listed. So perhaps I'll be doing, I don't really know, anything. But that, one of the reasons for doing that frequently is also to draw historic tax credits to a project. So I wouldn't be surprised to see that.
Very good. That's exciting. Anyone else from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number nine, resolution supporting a workforce housing tax credit application to the state for the Apartments on Main project located primarily at 128 West Third, which is the northeast corner of West Third and Main Streets, and approving an urban revitalization tax exemption application for the same. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution supporting a workforce housing tax credit application to the state for the Mississippi Plaza Housing Project at 201 North Harrison Street, which is the Mississippi Plaza Office Building, and approving streetscape assistance for the same. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Alderman, oh, Alderman Gripp?
Yeah, so if I had any concern supporting any of the resolutions for the tax credits, it would be this one. And the reason I say that is because the Mississippi Plaza is some of the best Class A office space that we have downtown. And I know that right now it's very difficult to fill that Class A space, but I think we really need to consider if we want to support converting that office space into residential, when we do have a lot of residential. And if you take these five developments that are before us, and then the Gordon Van Tyne Lofts, and then the Merge Development that we approved about a month ago, you're looking at a little over 600 new apartment units downtown. So I have a real concern. I think the ecosystem downtown, it's a delicate balance. We need to make sure that we've got retail, that we have folks living down there. But we also need large, large corporate down there as well as small. So, and large seems to be the place where we're missing, and we're having a lot of big successes in the other places. But I think we should keep this one on discussion, and I would encourage everyone on the council to kind of think how you feel about that heading into next week. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What we're looking at is just how powerful these economic development tools are that the state has offered. are that the state has offered. And I would ask our city administrator to lobby the state, you know, ten million dollars to the state of Iowa, when we can have this incredible economic possibilities. We got to lobby much harder to expand and extend these economic development tools.
Thank you. So I just have a follow-up question, actually just along Alderman Gripp's line of thought. I see Kyle's in the audience. I don't mean to pick on you, Kyle. Hey! But either someone from city staff or Kyle, either now or next week is fine. But my, I'm curious about some numbers behind that, because I've, I've often thought, on the same lines as Alderman Gripp, we seem to be getting a lot of the same types of, of entities downtown, and we don't want to saturate the market. So I'm just curious if, if either the city or the DDP is tracking supply and demand numbers as far as housing and as far as office space? And are, is there any data behind that? Is that something you can answer now, Kyle, or next week is fine as well? Okay, all right, wing it for us, would you?
Thanks. Kyle Carter, Downtown Davenport Partnership. So to answer your question, we are doing another housing study that we'll have done here in the middle of next year. The housing studies we've done up to this point have shown plenty of room for growth. It's really not a matter of, you know, are we, are we saturated? It's, are we building the right stuff? What our last study showed was, we can continue to grow as long as we don't build the same thing over and over again. And there are certain amenities that are required and certain types of building that will ensure that we can actually fill this stuff up. The, the, the actual study that we're doing now will probably be done, I, I'd say probably in May or so, but maybe sooner. More importantly is that we are working on a, a new downtown master plan that we'll be reaching out to the city on, and this will be a component of that. So we expect to have city engagement in that plan and want to make sure that you guys are at the table for that and that ultimately it actually gets adopted. But housing is a component of that, so I wasn't planning on talking about that tonight, but I think it makes sense to bring that up. The, from a, from a perspective on a national scale, we just got back from Baltimore from the National Downtown Conference. And basically, every single expert that was there said, if you're not building housing into the next fifty years in your, in your urban core, you're going to get left behind. So if anything, we are on track with a, a national trend to do this, and we need to keep up with this if we want to house all the people that we want to have in Davenport. So more, more to know on, on the nuances of that, but we are hard at work making sure that data is available.
So just to follow up, I assume you have some pulse on each of these projects, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Are they, are they bringing in the, the level of diversity that you feel would benefit us here?
Yeah, I think so. You know, in that last study, we did a lot of what it talked about is, is particular amenities. You know, are you building two bathrooms? Are there balconies? What's your price range? I think there's a lot of the middle market that we still need to address, which some of these do tackle. So yeah, I do think that this is a good mix. Some of them won't make it through, some of them will. I mean, the part of what this process that the public needs to understand is, all the council is doing is saying, hey, state of Iowa, we give you the, the blessing to go make your decision on what you have to give on your dollars. Some may not get out of the ground. So it's always good to couch this with, we hope these projects get done. And I think, and I think many of them will. But just for a point of clarity, I think it's always important to remember that the council's role is to simply say, at a local level, we think this is a good idea, knowing that it's out of your hands as to whether or not this stuff gets funded.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so stay there. Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. I don't really have a question, Kyle, but just an observation, as someone who has a direct relative that has explored and now living in the downtown, we toured at least four, maybe five different, and I want to draw their attention that we saw five different types of places, all good, but your point of offering something different, we saw that. And depending on what you're interested in, at different levels and different sizes and amenities, is offered down there and, and different folks, and of course, we chose a particular one, but whether it's the decks or the outside view or the restaurant, whatever, they are different and they're very nice. And all of them have a nice appeal, just depending on what you're doing. So I, I just wanted to applaud the difference in the offerings and, and you're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And the consultants were very clear. You know, if, if you don't get creative, you won't see the returns you've been.
Well, and the other thing that's tied to that is if we offer the housing that people want, we have, we have an opportunity to use that to draw people here, to, to live here and increase our population. So, and that's good for the bottom line.
It is.
For you and us.
It is. And ultimately, you know, the developers are taking this risk too. And if, and if they didn't feel the market was there, I don't think they're going to go spend ten million dollars on it. So there, there is some proof in just the fact that the developers are out there risking their, their own investment in this. But obviously, it takes a village, and that's why we're here, and that these projects still require some assistance to get done, especially if you want them to meet the quality that I think this community expects.
Okay, stay right there. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kyle, talk a little bit more, if you would, on the urban core housing. Define that, and you know, you spent some time out there, and they talked about that, you know, for the council and the public. What did you learn? What, what is impacted when you say urban core housing?
Sure. So one of the things that we had learned in Baltimore was that our, our country is getting older and younger at the same time, which is interesting to say. You know, we have a lot of folks that are moving out of, or into retirement and beyond that are selling their homes and moving into smaller spaces. At the same time, we have a generation of younger people who are tending to rent more and looking for, wanting walkable, livable spaces with entertainment around it. So we have these two different groups that are the largest groups in America right now that are both looking for this style of housing. So at some point, you got to keep building it to make sure you meet that demand. Now, I think something that's near and dear to Alderman Rossen's heart and many others here too, is that outer ring, which is, I think, what you're getting at too, that beyond the immediate core of downtown, we have a whole other neighborhood of historic homes. I think the city did something very wise in creating the Dream Project that I know has seen some very early success, in that we need to reinvest in those neighborhoods to make sure that there's affordable housing for single family too, that's quality, not just cheap, but quality. Because eventually, if you do want to own right now, downtown doesn't have many options for that, and we want the first place they look to be that immediate outer ring, because they still want all the same amenities. And if they want to own, we need to offer them something that's quality. So I, I agree that, that the urban core is more than just the downtown immediate area, but the city of Davenport was, was smart in, in getting in front of that with, with the Dream Project, and I hope that sees more funding, and, and I hope it sees the success that it seems like it, it will provide.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Looks like you're done for right now, Kyle. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this item will move on. Last item on this agenda is a motion approving the local objectives for the community... Oh, no, sorry, Bill. Come on up. You sure? Absolutely. Hop up here.
Bill Handel, fifteen fourteen, West High in Nashville. I have to agree with, with Councilman Alderman Gripp about the first class, Class A office space in downtown Davenport. You know, converting that buil-, that building, which is fairly recent, twenty-first century, I think, it, to, to housing, I think that's a, I mean, I can understand it, but on the other hand, it's somewhat of a cop-out in some kind of ways, because as far as attracting people, attracting businesses to our city, if we, we tell them that we just don't even have any, or so little or none, I mean, that just doesn't say a lot for us. And I, I would be skeptical about it. And to, to expand just very briefly on what Kyle Carter was saying, we can have as much in-town housing as, as we want to downtown, but you have to realize, one of the things that we have in our downtown that's unlike most cities is, we've got lots and lots of parking lots. And that, that kind of, you know, makes it not so attractive. If we're going to figure that every one of those people is going to have a car, it's, it's an issue that, that needs to be addressed at some point. And I would like to, to expand at some point about the issue I met earlier this year. We need to look at some kind of a public transit that'll link up all this together with amenities. And what I talked about earlier this year about a, a very quick loop that could have a twenty-minute cycle going from downtown to maybe the hospital and back down, I think is something that needs to be looked at for, for the continued growth of our downtown. Thanks.
Since Bill brought up the parking and car issue, I just wanted to propose a different thought, that, you know, a lot of younger people are kind of skipping on the cars and just doing a ride-share service when they need it, or, and primarily walking other, well, wise. So, and I think Kyle's probably still back there. I don't, are you guys still working on your parking study? Come on back, sorry.
It's, it's the city's parking study, and it's your next discussion topic.
Lovely, right on point. So, but yes, the, the needs and the nature of parking are changing, so that's all.
Any other commentary on this topic? I've been on this agenda for so long. Okay, so I would ask Alderman Ambrose to...
No, no.
No, motion approving...
Keep one and six on discussion, and the rest of the consent agenda, I move.
No, not six.
We're going to vote on that.
Oh, you mean for it to be voted on later in the agenda, yes. Yep, no, one and six, he's right. There's been a motion to answer a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen and Alderman Ambrose. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Gripp will lead the discussion. Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I, I did request item number ten to be on discussion, and you only need one, so thank you. Public safety. Item number one, resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. And it is the most wonderful time of the year, so we have Thanksgiving and Christmas events here. Quad City Arts Festival of Trees Holiday Parade Downtown Davenport, Saturday, November twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, four AM until parade ends. Staging area closures beginning at four AM, Third Street between Pershing Avenue and Leclerc Street, Pershing Avenue and Iowa Street between Second Street and Fourth Street. Parade route beginning at nine AM, Third Street from Pershing Avenue to Scott Street, Scott Street from Third Street to Second Street, Second Street from Scott Street to finish at Iowa Street. All north-south streets on parade route will be closed from River Drive to Fourth Street until the parade ends. Scott County Family Y Turkey Trot, Thursday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, six AM to eleven AM. Closure Second Street from Gaines Street to Main Street, Main Street from Second Street to Lombard Street, Lombard Street from Harrison Street to Brady Street, Western Most Lane on Brady Street from Lombard Street to Central Park Avenue, Southern Most Lane on Central Park Avenue from Brady Street to Harrison Street, Eastern Most Lane on Harrison Street from Lombard Street to Second Street. City of Davenport Parks and Recreation, February Learning Center Holiday Light Display, eighteen hundred West Twelfth Street, Saturday, November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, through Saturday, January fourth, two thousand twenty, five thirty PM to nine thirty PM. Closure Eastbound Lane of West Twelfth Street from Davy Street to Division Street. St. Ambrose University Children's Theater Production, five eighteen West Locust Street, Wednesday, December fourth, two thousand nineteen, eight AM to twelve PM. Thursday, December fifth, two thousand nineteen, eight AM to three PM. And Friday, December sixth, two thousand nineteen, eight AM to three PM. Closure Gaines Street from Locust Street to Lombard Street. Davenport Community School District High School Track Meets, Brady Street Stadium, thirty-six oh three Brady Street, various dates in April and May, two thousand twenty. Schedule is attached. Two thirty PM to eight thirty PM, closure is East Thirty-Sixth Street between Brady Street and Davenport Avenue. Davenport Community School District Intermediate Track Meets, Brady Street Stadium, thirty-six oh three Brady Street, various dates in April and May, two thousand twenty. Four thirty PM to eight thirty PM, closure is East Thirty-Sixth Street between Brady Street and Davenport Avenue. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these closures for events? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council? These items will all move on. Item number two is a motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. Quad City Arts Festival of Trees Holiday Parade Downtown Davenport, Saturday, November twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, nine AM until twelve PM. Outdoor music performances over fifty DBA. That's the wrong page. No, it just ended. Okay. All right. Circle Tap Fundraiser, thirteen forty-five West Locust Street, Saturday, November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, two PM to eight PM, outdoor music and band over fifty DBA. City of Davenport Parks and Recreation, February Learning Center Holiday Light Display, eighteen hundred West Twelfth Street, Saturday, November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, through Saturday, January fourth, two thousand twenty, five thirty PM to ten PM, outdoor music over fifty DBA. Steve Aaron's Chris Kendall Market QC, four twenty-one West River Drive, Friday, December sixth, two thousand nineteen, five PM to nine PM. Saturday, December seventh, two thousand nineteen, ten AM to ten PM. And Sunday, December eighth, two thousand nineteen, ten AM to five PM, outdoor music performances over fifty DBA. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these noise variance requests? Anyone from the council? All items will move on. Item number three is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. Section A is for new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera, as noted in the packet. Off Point Pub, twenty twenty-five Hickory Grove Road, outdoor area license type C liquor. Wise Guys Pizza and Pub, twenty-eight twenty-four West Locust Street, Unit A three, outdoor area license type C liquor. Hawkeye Sports Bar and Grill, Ortiz Holdings LLC, forty-six forty-six Cheyenne Avenue, outdoor area license type C liquor. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these beer and liquor license applications? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman Tompkins?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass the Hawkeye Sports Bar and Grill if possible tonight.
We didn't have that on the agenda, notifying the public that we're going to vote tonight. I have to say, the ombudsman really frowns upon that, so...
Then we understand. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us in line, Tom. Any other comments? Seeing none, those will move on. Section B is annual license renewals, and we do not read those, but they're listed there for your information. And with that, I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I really get the fun part. I move all items to consent.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Dickman. Our third area to be discussed is public works. Alderman Dunn will lead the discussion. Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have eighteen items on the agenda this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving the planned specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the J.M. Morris Boulevard Pump Station, Pump Station two oh two improvement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the planned specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the deck replacement on the North Division Street Bridge over Duck Creek. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving change order number one to the contract with McDermott Concrete LLC for the FY twenty Civic Access ADA Ramp Program in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting work completed under the West twenty-eight and a half and Gaines Street Resurfacing Project. The total contract with McCarthy Improvement Company was a hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding the contract for the Main Street Landing Block N five Phase Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding the contract for the Main Street Landing Block N5 Phase 3 Lighting and Electrical to Shaw Electric Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $291,702.97. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding the contract for the downtown decorative street, streetlight LED upgrade Phase 2 to Tri-City Electric Company of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $131,721.32. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution accepting work completed under the Fourth Street and Brady Street Streetscaping Project. The total contract with Emery Construction Group Incorporated was $282,486.19. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Alderman Gripp?
Uh, thank you, Alderman Dunn. I just wanted to, uh, say that the, the street, the downtown streetscaping is looking really good, this, uh, project in particular. And if you look at the decorative streetlight and the streetscaping, the downtown partnership came to the table this year, uh, looking to add money to what they wanted to spend, uh, downtown, uh, for streetscaping and lights. And the downtown is looking a lot, lot better. It looks really good.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving engineering and planning services for flood protection mazers for the Water Pollution Control Plant and Compost Facility, DeVonstra and Kim Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $110,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. And then I'm gonna read the next six items and then ask for public comment. Item number nine is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 10 is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 11 is a resolution assessing the cost of tree removal at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 12 is a resolution assessing the cost of building, boarding up of various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 13 is a resolution assessing the cost of building demolition at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 14 is a resolution assessing the cost of streetscaping at ver- cost of streetscaping at various lots and tracts of real estate. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address any of these items? Counsel. Seeing none, this item, these items will move on. Item number fish, 15 is a motion accepting the Division Street Soccer Complex Parking Lot Resurfacing Project completed by Tri-City Blacktop Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa. The project was completed with a final contract amount of $95,333.71. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number 16 is a motion approving the construction of traffic signals at Cobham on Hickory Grove Road by Davenport Electric Contract Company in the amount of $88,214.32 to be paid for in its entirety by Cobham. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 17 is a motion approving card reader upgrades at City Hall from Tri-City Electric Company of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $67,030. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, item number 18 is a motion approving change order one and two to the Police Station Parking Ramp Repair Project with Western Specialty Contractors of West Des Moines, Iowa in the amount of $51,225. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Condon, would you set the agenda, please?
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I move to put all items on consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The agenda's set. And back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Condon. Our last area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Mattson will lead that discussion. Alderman Kuhl will set the agenda.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, finance discussion, item number one, resolution approving a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement and providing for issuance of sewer revenue bonds. Anyone from the public like to discuss sewer revenue? Counsel. Very good. Item two, resolution setting a public hearing for the purpose of amending the North Urban Renewal Plan. Anyone from the public like to discuss that? Counsel. All right. Item three, resolution awarding the contract for the Freight House South Side Deck Replacement to WRS Construction, Inc. of Davenport in the amount of $308,139,82. Anyone from the public like to discuss that? Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Yeah, yesterday at our, uh, update meeting, I had asked about the, the schedule for the deck replacement. Cause if you guys recall, uh, the deck replacement was top priority for, uh, the River, Riverfront Improvement Commission, uh, in last year's budgeting session. We had hoped it was gonna be done by the fall. I just wanted to let you know, I, I was given the information that it's like, more likely to happen in the spring, especially with the colder weather due next week. Um, and so I just asked, uh, Director Aaron said he would be sure to make sure that the, the farmers market, the Freight House folks, and the Riverfront Improvement Commission all understood that it'll be done, I think, whatever, before the farmers market starts up next spring. So, just to share that information with you. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Item four, resolution approving a service agreement with Davenport Industrial Railroad LLC for marketing, operations, and maintaining the city's transload facility. Would anybody from the public like to discuss that? It's a big deal. Counsel. Very good. Item five, resolution approving the lease agreement with Davenport Industrial Railroad LLC for the main rail line and all related sidetracks and the real property 25 feet on each side thereof at the transload facility or terminal. Anyone from the public? Counsel. Good deal. Number six, motion approving the purchase of Aruba Wireless Hardware from Aircore Wireless in the amount of $96,372.30. Anybody from the council? I'm sorry, public. Anyone from the council? Very good. And item number seven, thank you, motion approving the purchase of new audiovisual equipment for the council chambers at City Hall from ACP Creative It of Buffalo Grove, Illinois in the amount of just $81,106,051. Anyone from the public like to be able to talk about hearing us better? Counsel. Thank you. And then, of course, we have purchases of 10,000 to 50,000. Free information only. They're in your agenda. So, I'd ask Alderman Kuhl to please recommend an agenda. Or I'm, for, yes, an agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Scherr. I move that all items may move forward to the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Very good. Opposed? Thank you, mayor. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson and Alderman Kuhl. We have one item under our other, other ordinances, resolutions, and motions this, this evening. Is there a motion for suspension of the rules to vote on the resolution below?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Rossin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Ambrose. Nine yeses and one recusal, your honor.
Thank you very much. The rules are now suspended. The resolution is resolution supporting a workforce housing tax credit of application to the, uh, to the state of Iowa for 400 West River Drive project to be located in the 400 block of West River Drive, then approving an urban revitalization tax exemption, URTE, application for the same, for the same location that through the Davenport Development Group, uh, is the petitioner. Any public with business on that one?
Your honor, counsel? My name's Jeff Feindrich, Bettendorf, Iowa. Um, just a question relating to, we had, I believe, five items that were similar in nature. And is there a particular reason this one is picked out or the other ones are not? Or should they not all be considered in the same manner? That's my question. Thank you.
For the mayor and council and the public, uh, the applicant specifically requested that the council vote on this item, um, last week when I spoke with them. So, we were able to accommodate that request.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Uh, seeing no one. Um, is there, well, an Alderman move the resolution?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the Alderman? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose and Rossin?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one recusal, your honor.
Thank you very much. Brian, is there any public with business this evening? Again, notice, uh, five-minute limit. So, please come up if you have any comments. I think, Bill, you're ready to go. Five minutes, please.
Okay. I was gonna talk about riverfront, but I'm not going to. This is something I talked about previous meetings, but, uh, I think, uh, especially in light of what's talked about today, about all the new housing in downtown Davenport, I wanna bring it up. And it's about the apartment building at the River Center Expansion Space. I guess that's the Merge Development. And I addressed a letter today to, to our city administrator, Corey Spiegel. And, uh, Ms. Spiegel, not much more than a month ago, I first heard of the apartment building that's been proposed on what is now an underutilized green space between the south wall of the River Center and East Second Street, just west of the two-story Tag Building. As a land, longtime architect, well-versed in city planning, who's lived in cities that are viable, viable, enjoyable, and growing, I was dumbfounded at that prospect. Let me explain. You're probably aware, the River Center started out on the, a site north of West Forest Street between the Hotel Blackhawk and the Adler Theater in the late 80s, later in the early 90s, I believe. Uh, most of the, uh, buildings, uh, were cleared to the, um, east of the Mid-America Energy Building, uh, at great expense and effort, allowing the current second phase of the River Center to be built, leaving an ample green space in front of it to the south. The River Center has served our community fairly well over the years, but having its two major components across the street from each other, uh, connected only by a skybridge has resulted in a convention center that, that's both quirky and problematic. Um, and, uh, in that the first thing conventions usually look for are, is the number of contiguous square feet on one, one level. Uh, so what has future-proofed our current River Center so far has been that green space that now is being proposed to be sold at a very low sum of $250,000. And, um, and I feel that, uh, that, that the sale of that, although it's already been approved by council and, and, uh, and I know we're, we want to be, uh, developer-friendly, I think we need to look at it more closely and make sure we're not verging on the level of being developer-delirious. Because what we may be doing is jeopardizing a 30, 40, or 50 million dollar asset, which is our River Center. And to do so without, and I don't think there's been any feasibility study that, that the, the city administration has, uh, has commissioned. I think it's reckless behavior and exactly the sort of thing that a city administrator needs to examine carefully with designers and planners, not me, by the way. The other approach, which seems to be the one that's been taken, is to take the pulse of city council members and the downtown chamber and not create a ruckus. But maybe a ruckus is called for, especially in light of the fact all these other projects are being, uh, green-lighted, uh, in today's meeting. Um, I was, I met with one of the Alderman, a meeting passed, who, uh, stated that the opinion that convention center business is really going downhill overall. And, uh, in any event, the city doesn't currently have the money to expand the River Center. And the money may be true, but I have to disagree with, uh, the idea about convention center business going down. In Nashville, where I live, its Music City Center is estimated to bring in a estimated $460 million just this year alone, uh, to its local economy, which is about what it costs to build when it was put up seven years ago. And I was fortunate the other week to hear, hear Dave Harrell, President, CEO of Visit Quad City, say that their group's goal is to increase tourism in this area by 25%, going from 800 million to over a billion, which I think is a challenging but doable goal. Uh, and the city has a plan to enhance and upgrade a riverfront that costs right now of 50 million. And isn't that tourism dollars? Isn't that the, one of the reasons that we're expending all those funds? I understand the closing on this site's been tentatively scheduled for next month. And I know council has approved it already, but it's not too late to make a good decision. And, uh, I think, I want the, the council members to consider the good of the city, not necessarily the good of an out-of-town developer. And I urge, uh, Ms. Spiegel to work with the council and choose one of the alternative sites they were previously looking at, which they did not, I, as far as I understand, reject out of hand. We don't have an architect on staff, so we don't have an ability to, uh, to, uh, evaluate things like that. And we're at a disadvantage because of that.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, the way architecture is today...
Hold on, Bill, we're done. That's five minutes. Thank you.
I know. Thank you very much.
Can be cut and pasted. And, uh... It's still done. Even if we have to go to the extreme of giving of the land, $250,000 per, so... That was my timer. Yeah, thank you. Is there any, anybody else with, uh, anything they wanna mention tonight, public with business? Uh, are there any other reports of city officials? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Meeting adjourned.